This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. And as Joanne asked, turn your mic off when you're not speaking. The first on the agenda is Thomas Hayes from Dank on a change order that we got to put through. Do you want to talk us through that, please, Thomas?
Yep. Before I went through that, if anyone wanted, I could give you an update of where they are with that work. New Century started two weeks ago during the conversions from the overhead to the underground on the property owners. And right now, the schedule is to have anyone converted over to the new underground system by the end of February, early March, which is ahead of schedule. And everything's been going very well so far. As Norma mentioned, we do have one change order. The change, this will be change order number seven on the project for $1,358.26. This is for some additional work associated with the American Legion. When the project started, the American Legion had an existing heated sidewalk. It was removed as a result of the project. And the original scope for New Century was to reinstall the heated sidewalk that did not include the connection to the actual American Legion system like it should have. So this, attached with the change order is the backup for some antifreeze to fill the system and some tie and connectors and some time to actually make the connection into the American Legion's heating system. This is the only property that's like that because the American Legion already had a heating, already had the sidewalk that was heated but was subsequently removed. All other properties are, be hooked up by the property owner themselves because they weren't existing.
Does anyone have any questions for Thomas on this change order?
If, this is Joe Christman. If that already had the pre-existing, how did that get overlooked knowing they have to reconnect it?
I'm not sure.
I mean, they already knew they wanted it installed. So I guess I'm not understanding how some, something that simple, knowing that it's got to be hooked up, got overlooked.
I can't tell you, Joe, why. It was a pre-existing sidewalk. It has to be put back. They needed the antifreeze. I have no answer for you. I guess on a multimillion dollar project, you're going to have a few missteps. Anyone else got any questions? If not, can we have a motion to accept this change order?
I'll make that motion to accept the change order.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Do we have a second? So any other board member out there that could second this motion?
I'll second it.
Is that Joe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry to interrupt you, Norma. Joe, it's just you and I and Norma tonight.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what I see, so.
Yeah.
So that it'll, you and I will be the tag team for motions.
Okay, all righty. So, anyone opposed? Because nobody's there, so the motion is carried, the change order, and we'll get that in there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Thomas. Matt Cooper, are you on? Yes, you are.
Yes, I am.
Okay. I'm turning my mic off so you can...
Okay. I just wanted to do an update on the sewer project. It's been kind of uneventful for past recent months. But just to run through kind of the bullet points of our update. About the only real change on here that you'll see is the project schedule. We had originally anticipated putting that out to bid in December. However, that's pending DEC approval of the drawings and specs. Those were submitted back in early October, and we still haven't gotten the review completed on that. So, you know, we're changing that bidding date on our schedule to February, anticipating we can get comments from them soon to get that out to bid, which pushes back the award of contracts and pushed back the construction start. However, if you compared this to previous schedules I provided you, I did hold the June 2022 date for completion simply because I didn't anticipate a lot of work to get finished this winter anyway. So if we would have bid it in December and awarded contracts in February, I didn't anticipate much happening. Some administrative stuff could have gotten done. So I don't see that as being a real delay. Now, if we don't get this out to bid in February, then I could see that resulting in pushing back the project completion date because that will start to have some, some impact on our ability to get, you know, the contractor out there in a timely manner this year. So we'll see. Well, we're working with DEC to try to get their review complete and make sure we address any other comments. The funding bullets here are all, as you have seen on previous updates, all the grants that are previously awarded, the loan that was previously awarded, all are the same. We only have one placeholder on here of a pending grant, and that's a WQIP. We did apply for that back in 2019 and did not receive it. In 2020, there were no WQIP grants. In fact, there were no state wastewater grants at all. So I've got a question mark on whether or not we want to resubmit that application 2021. But that's still pending there even being a funding round in 2021 for those grants. So that's to be determined. Permits, the issuance of the speediest permit is a little bit of an old one that's been on there for a little while as that was issued back last fall. The SISD determination, now that's a new one on here, and this is part of what's holding up the current review. And that is the significant improvement, significant damage determination that is required for any work on a facility that's within a 100-year floodplain. So the Riverside pump stations within that floodplain, we're trying to show that the improvements to it are less than 50% of the current value. If, if it's determined to be over 50% of the current value, there are significantly greater amounts of flood protection that would be necessary. And since the pump station's connected to the bathroom, it would be required for the whole building. So we have made our determination or our evaluation of it being less than 50% provided it to the flood administrator, which is your code enforcement officer. And they've concurred with that. And that has been sent in to Flood Hub who manages these. And as long as they concur with that, we're good to go, so.
Matt, that was just recently, like, one day last week, that that letter went to the Flood Hub, right?
Correct, correct. That's the one. Yep, from Mr. Henderson, yep. Action items, there's actually nothing for the board to do at tonight's meeting. Like I said, we're anxious to get this out to bid, and hopefully that'll be my update one of your next one or two board meetings, is that we, we are ready to put this out to bid. Moving on to the INI study, you know, we completed that engineering report last summer and submitted it to DEC and EFC for approval. We still have not gotten comments on that. You received the first 50% of the grant to cover that study upfront. They dispersed the last 50% of that grant to you once EFC and DE...
Did we lose you, Matt?
I think we did lose him.
To get that last step complete. So the village is reimbursed with the grant money for the bills you've already covered. So that's what I've got tonight. It's a pretty short update. Getting started here in the new year, we'd at least let you know where we stand.
Well, we appreciate that, Matt. Moving ahead, slumber chair.
Yep. Any questions for me?
I, it's Nancy Hyde. I do have a question. And maybe the question is for Matt. It might be for DPW, or it might be for wastewater treatment. I'm not sure. I have noticed, especially in days like when we had Christmas time, we get a lot, when we get a lot of rain or snowmelt, there appears to be a lot of standing water in the community downtown. And I was under the impression, when this new project was taken care of, we wouldn't have that anymore. So am I misunderstanding the project, or is it just everything isn't finished? And is my question clear?
So with our collection system, none of that has happened yet. We've only designed it.
Okay.
But even then, it would only affect backups in the sanitary sewer. If you've got storm sewer system backing up, it wouldn't necessarily improve that at all because there have been efforts to separate the two. Now, there are some areas of potential cross-connection where your storm sewer is connecting to the sanitary. And when the sanitary backs up, that could back up your storm. And this project would improve that. But it's a little hard to tell who connected what pipes underneath what road 80 years ago, you know?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay.
Is that you, Rob? Do you have any comments? Sorry, Norma.
I have a comment. This is Terry. As far as the standing water that you're noticing downtown, it's, it's because they aren't up to grade yet. That's only down town. Storm drains aren't too great. They are actually above the grade now because it's just the binder. Once they put the final throw to blacktop, then you won't see any more standing water downtown.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Matt or Terry? Okay, moving right along. Paul Locke, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm calling from a landline now, Norma. I've been cut off three times. So I'm hoping that this, this connection works.
Okay, well, what can we do to help you here for the budget for 2022?
Right, just in case I get cut off, I do want to just make one statement before. I want to recognize Joanne for her efforts in answering my FOIL requests. I've heard at these meetings and know that she's very busy. From my perspective, she has communicated well and strives to provide information as quickly as she can. So good job with a tough job, Joanne.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the reason for, I've asked to be on the agenda, I appreciate you putting me on here, Norma, is to talk about the 2022 budget process. So I've got a letter here. I'll read into the record. And if for some reason you have trouble hearing me, please let me know. So I'll start. "The annual budget is perhaps the village's most vital document and should be developed using the most current and accurate information available. I've invested some time reviewing and analyzing the village's financial statements as well as New York State Guides on Budgeting and Planning to provide the board one taxpayer's perspective for consideration for the budget for fiscal year ending 2022 as developed. New York State's website has many tools to assess and analyze local government's fiscal affairs. This website is a source of the historical information stated below, and I'll be sending you to view a multi-year comparison of the village's financial performance using this site as well as this document I'm reading from now. Overview: The Village of Clayton's expenditures have exceeded revenue for many years. Over the last six years, 2015 through 2020, village expenditures have exceeded general revenues by $555,000. COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on 2020, but it only exacerbated an already difficult situation the village has been in for many years. The mayor and trustees, with this budget cycle and as fiduciaries, have the opportunity and obligation to taxpayers to develop a realistic, fiscally responsible budget and operational plan to control its costs and tax rates and end deficit spending. Process and calendar: The Office of the State Controller in its Understanding of the Budget Process publication describes a team budgeting process that starts with a budget calendar. The OSC recommends for a village such as ours with a fiscal year beginning June 1, that the budget process start by February 8 with the specific steps scheduled through May 1. I'll be sending you a copy of the OSC's calendar and ask that the village consider adopting this process and develop and share with the public a detailed budget calendar tailored to the village's needs. One specific issue that needs to be resolved early on is the unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance was just $48,000 in fiscal year ending 2017, 2% of general fund appropriations. For fiscal year ending 2020, the UFB was $328,000, or 15% of general fund appropriations. Should be noted that a full third of the ending fund balance was a result of a reversal of $119,000 in aged reserves that the board presented that were no longer supportable or needed. The village has recently adopted an unassigned fund balance policy that sets a minimum requirement of 25% of the annual budget appropriations. I thank the board for adopting and committing to this policy. New York State encourages fund balance policies stating, quote, "A goal to mitigate current and future risks such as revenue shortfall, unanticipated expenditures, stabilization of tax rates, protection of creditworthiness, and to provide an adequate class, to provide for adequate cash flow needs during times of stress." Specifically, should the unassigned fund balance fall below the 25% minimum, the village's policy calls for replenishment of the fund in the following fiscal year or, absent that, over not more than three fiscal years. So what are the implications for a fiscal year ending 2022 budget? Using fiscal year 2021 appropriations of 2.2 million and the beginning fund balance of $328,000 and applying the 25% minimum, the unassigned fund balance falls short of policy requirements by $224,000. If that shortfall is replenished over a one-year cycle and resolves solely through taxation, which I do not recommend, a one-time tax increase of 16% would be required. If over three years, this would be spread out as 5% one-time tax increases. This simplistic analysis assumes no cost increases, no new projects to be funded, and no changes in revenues or aid. The budget process needs to reflect the plan to comply with the policy, and I have identified an opportunity, which I'll describe in a minute, that may mitigate and eliminate this issue. The unassigned fund balance policy in reserve review practice should be applied to all funds. For the purposes of illustration, I have applied the unassigned fund balance policy to the water fund balance of $880,000. Again, using fiscal year 2021 appropriations of $661,000 and applying a 25% minimum yields a potential reduction in the current fund balance of $715,000, a sizable opportunity. New York State law allows water fund surpluses to be transferred to the unassigned fund balance. Any surpluses could be used in a manner that benefits taxpayers, such as to close the gap to policy in the unassigned fund balance noted above, thus avoiding a tax increase, to build additional balances in the unassigned fund balance, to establish new reserves, for example, general road maintenance, finance new projects, stabilize future tax and water rate increases. It should be acknowledged that when water rate billings generate surpluses and those surpluses are used to fund general expenses, water rates should be viewed as a phantom tax. Please note that the water fund's capital reserve account has been in the $450,000 range for the last five years. The sewer fund's reserve for repairs is $484,000. A thorough review of fund balances and reserves should be conducted to confirm they are supportable and appropriate adjustments are made. I'm also attaching two pages to this email, which I'll send to you, of bar charts from the Office of State Controller that compare the Village of Clayton to three baselines: all New York State villages, North Country villages, and medium-upstate villages for fiscal year 2019, the most current data available on the website. These comparisons may be useful to consider as you develop next year's cost assumptions. So my summary, summary of my requests. One is to adopt a budget calendar. Second, rebuild and rebuild the unassigned fund balance per policy. Establish fund balance policies for all funds and review current levels. Review and validate reserves for capital and repairs. And review the fiscal indicators and comparisons to other villages to identify assumptions. Conclusion: Some members of the board ran for their office on promises of transparency and fiscal responsibility. Forward-thinking and focused over the next year and beyond would reconcile well with the village's motto of, quote, "Honor the past, challenge the present, create the future," unquote, deliver on campaign promises, and discharge the board's fiduciary responsibility. That's all I have. Thanks for listening.
Well, we have the budget calendar, Robert. It was handed out last week with the week of February 8, the first meeting with the department head. So we can send that to you, Paul. And if you'll send us all the information you just shared with us verbally, we can take a look at it, okay?
Okay. Thanks for listening, Norma. I appreciate it. And thanks again, Joanne, for all your help.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Paul? Okay, thank you. Kevin's not on the phone, and you've got his report. I don't have anything extra. Josh is still in school. This is the last week for that. So, do anybody have any questions for the police department? If not, we can move on to you, Terry.
Hi, everyone. Again, you all have a copy of my report. Things are going well. We are, we're almost the end of the month here. So we've got one hard month left in winter, and then March is the end of the changeover month. And so I've been pretty lucky so far. I wanted to add that there's about 90 feet of staving missing on the Mary Street dock. We want to go down. We're not going to get anything fancy. We want to at least get it doctored up so that we can utilize those sections next year. There's about 90 feet of staving missing, and we're just going to kind of doctor it up until we get the ready for the project, which is supposed to start in the fall of 2021. So we're taking, we're out right now getting prices, and we're running in the ballpark of around $1,200, $1,300. And there is money in our dock budget. We'll be, we'll be okay there. And now that we're making ice, we can take it off the ice and get it done in a timely manner. That's about all I have. If you have any other questions on my report?
I didn't have anything, Terry. Does anyone on the board have anything for Terry, or?
No, I don't. Thank you.
No? So I guess you're good to go, Terry. Well, there is one thing I'd like to ask you, Terry, and I would be glad to come up to the town barn and ask for some cooperation here. We're in a bind right now with COVID. And we can't respond at 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning to text messages and emails. So kind of keep them within a eight to four type of... And if they're life-threatening, of course, call. But straighten out little details would be helpful if we could get them a little later in the day.
Okay, I apparently don't know what you're talking about. It must be you're getting emails or texts, Terry, or...
No, I don't mind, but come on. I mean, they're, we're trying, and this COVID thing takes up a whole lot of time for Alicia. And when you get, the more people you get that you've got to chase, the more time it takes. And that is the number one thing that we all have to do, is stay healthy and keep our staff healthy and our community. So...
Absolutely.
Nothing falls under the rug because we're all fighting COVID. Okay, thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, who's going to talk to us? Rob or Star from the water plant?
I can talk to you if you want.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay, so in December, there were no speedy permit violations or water complaints, even though we did have the overflow event on Christmas at Riverside Drive and East Union. That overflow, we had 20.5 hours overtime, a lot of that overflow. And that's one of the things that we're going to look at in this coming year, overtime that guys are getting. Month of December, they had 68.5. Of that, 68.5, 36 was for weekend coverage. And then 32.5 hours for... Riverside Drive pump stations, transmitter, ordered replacement for that. That's been, that's been so armed for quite some time. So that should, in the long run, that should save us some overtime and pay for stuff. Kinsley Power, they, some work at the base side, our station. The generator still operates. They came in, found a pinhole, a diaphragm with a primer. Their, that part's been ordered. When it comes in, they'll replace it. Get a warranty. It's in November, there was a forinator at the water plant that went bad. A tester came up with a panel to replace, and that didn't quite fit the forinator. Another part that's been ordered, and when it comes in, fixed that. So that's where we're at with... The guys are continuing to do good work and be safe, monitoring coming in, who's leaving.
And they're all healthy over there, right now?
Yeah, Star, Star's keeping a closed cab. They stuck by the line, tracks the whip. So Star's doing a good job.
Yeah, we just got to cross our L O Ts, make public health happy. Does anyone have any questions for Star or for Rob? If not, thank you very much for calling in. Thanks for a good job over there.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, we're moving right on to the consent agenda. I've got a question on page three. And maybe I misunderstood, but I thought, Nancy, you were going to call Joe about the sign law.
Yes.
Okay, because it says here that I didn't do anything.
No, you, you, we spoke later, and you told me to, to call him, and yes.
Yeah, and that was at the meeting that you would get hold of. Okay, so we should change that. I didn't do anything. Okay.
Yes. No, I, no, I understand that. Thank you. Yep.
Are there any other questions on the consent agenda items one, two, and three? If not, Nancy, would you make a motion, please?
Yes, I will. Make that motion for the consent agenda one, two, and three.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And on the capital projects, there was a correction made back on global contracting that we indicated in here. The check was for $32,000. The original amount was $33,000 that was approved, but we held some money back because of a water tower. So we just wanted that to be... So we just wanted that to be documented, that they are all correct now. Is there anything else on the consent agenda around the capital projects? If not, can we get a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to accept number four.
Nancy, okay. And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. On favor?
Well, that's Stevie.
Aye. Are you on now, Steve?
Yes, yeah. I had a little problem with the computer.
Okay, so Steve, I thought this sounded like you. Okay, so are we all set on number four? On favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. On this shared DOT agreement, Joanne, do you know if it was two or four years that we did it before? I think it was four. I meant to check that today, and I didn't.
It was four years.
It was four, okay. So did everybody on the board get a chance to take a look at that? And it's the same thing that we've had for decades with them.
Yeah, I didn't see anything wrong with it.
Okay, so would somebody make a motion so I can sign that tomorrow for four years?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Nancy, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carried. Okay, on the library agreement, do you want to talk about that, Nancy?
Yes, that would be fine. So we send an agreement to the town of Clayton, because the town also helps out with giving money to the library. So this service agreement is between the village and the town of Clayton for that additional $9,000 that the town gives to Han Memorial Library. And this is done every year. So I would make a motion to accept that annual library service agreement, and it is a yearly agreement.
Okay, and do we have a second on that?
Yeah, this is Joe. I'll second that.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. And the historian service agreement, we share the historian with the town, and they contribute to that salary as well. So that's an annual agreement. And it could be said that the historian's doing a great job. He has great stuff in the paper. He relates well with the state in the county. He's got some great pictures that he's taken of the project. And he's starting to look into, next year will be the 150th birthday of the Village of Clayton. So he's getting into, getting some information together for that. So he's doing a really great job. So would someone make a motion to renew that?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, anyone? Joanne, you'll get those down to the town in the next couple of days, okay?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. Okay, now you're on, Joanne. Tell us what you've got here.
Sorry about that. Had to get my mic on. Okay, so the first thing I have is the draft invoice for the new Link Water Bills. Everyone has a copy of that. That's what they're going to look like. I've been working with Leah and, I think her name is Lee from Harris to get this situated and make it look like, kind of make it look like it did before, but it is going to be blue. And I think it's just more user-friendly as far as reading. We're just going to, if you guys approve this, then I'm going to order 1,500 forms tomorrow, so that we'll be ready for the March 1 billing.
Now, Joanne, we're all done with Harris, right?
We're all done with Harris as far as the water sewer. Yeah.
Yeah, right, okay. That was just a question I had.
I mentioned Harris because we're still going to buy the forms from them.
Joanne, the only situation I saw on this invoice is on the left side, it says 425 Mary Street, and on the right side, it says 450 Mary Street.
Yeah, that was corrected today.
Okay.
And thank you for catching that.
And otherwise, I didn't see anything.
Okay.
Looked fine to me.
If everybody else is okay with it, then I can call her tomorrow and put an order in, if that's okay.
I think it looks fine.
Okay. All right, so the next thing is Kevin Patchen. I need approval for his, he's the joint planning board. And what is his? His term is going to run through December 31, 2025.
Yeah, we'll need a motion for that. Would somebody make that motion to accept Kevin Patchen for the planning board?
I'll make that motion for Kevin Patchen on the planning board.
A second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Joe, and on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's taken care of.
Yeah, he replaced Paul Heckman.
Right. Paul Heckman.
Yeah. So, and then also Alicia wanted me to put on here for Janine Leclair for the library. She has to have an increase because of minimum wage has gone up to $1,250 an hour, and that's effective 12/31/2020.
I'll make that motion for Janine Leclair.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, go ahead, Joanne.
And then the same for Teresa Fortune, $1,250 an hour effective 12/31/2020.
I'll make that motion.
Nancy, and the second is from?
Joe.
Joe, make a second of that. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Good, okay. All righty, we talked about Tom Leclair, and so we're all set with him. And we did include the report that he sent to the state. It was interesting, all the things that he'd accomplished, even with COVID out there. And I sent you the schedule for the budget. And I checked with the department heads, and those dates work for them. So Tina, we'll reach out to them the week of February 8 and get department heads lined up and start this budget process. So...
Yeah, Norma, that whole email, and Nancy tried to email it to me as well. I get none of it. It's all in code.
Wow.
Yeah, I know, right?
Any emails that I sent to?
I don't know if it's something on my computer, but it's not allowing me to open any of that.
Okay, well, I will...
Is it just the attachment?
Yes.
Okay, so because it's in digital telepath, I can send it to you in PDF file.
Oh, that would be super.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so you're going to be all set now, Joe. Thanks. The only thing I'd like to bring to your attention, we got a notice over the weekend that the sales tax money that will be coming on February 4 to the county will be $467,827 less than what we would normally get for the county. I haven't seen anything from the county to see if they're going to take the same ratios of how they're going to disperse it to towns and villages. But that's a big hit right there, and it's, that money, according to the Controller's Office, will go into our distressed provider account, which will help nursing homes and hospitals. I don't know how we're going to make it, but we're helping, but we don't have any choice. That's where it's going. So just makes our budget that much tougher. So I think we'll hear something from the county pretty quick. I didn't call. I mean, probably 40 people have already called them, and he'll put something out there as soon as he's got the information. But $467,827 not coming to Jefferson County. So is there anything else anybody has that they want to share with us?
I just have one question, Norma. Last year, I don't think it was resolved about how much snow has to be on the sidewalks to get removed, because there's still quite a few places in the village that they're not shoveling or doing anything.
Well, get a list together and get Kevin and Terry out to round them up.
Yeah, because they're getting pretty icy.
And I haven't been walking like I should, so I haven't seen that many. I actually haven't seen any, but I know that the boat museum went right over to, I think, I asked Mike to, and they cleaned that one up, right, Nancy?
Well, they did a very good job of cleaning up the entrance, but for some reason, the young man completely avoids the sidewalk. The entrance was much better. It's icy again, but he completely misses the sidewalk, which I don't understand.
I guess I don't either. So I guess that goes right in the list of everybody else, Joe, so we'll add that one. And if you see them, we just have to document it and send them a letter.
Well, did we come to the conclusion how much snowfall first?
Thought it was two inches, but I'm not sure. We can look. Kevin's got, Kevin will be here tomorrow. I'll ask him. I thought for some reason it was two inches, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
Norma, I think you're basically correct, because we did have that discussion last year. But we also knew that getting dustings and things of that nature, and we've had a lot of dustings this year.
Yeah, I mean, we just haven't had that much snow.
Right, no, we haven't, no.
So we'll take a look at them. If anybody sees any, we'll give them to Kevin. And the corners, the DPW guys do. So I think they've got those all cleaned out. I haven't noticed any of those that aren't done. So take a look at them, Joe, and we'll get Terry and Kevin on it.
I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Sure. Anything else from anybody?
Yes, I had one thing. I noticed today, there's a few of the telephone, or the poles coming down.
I don't think, I don't know, maybe they did.
There was one or two that came down on Riverside, I believe, today. Yes, I thought that was exciting.
It is exciting. It's disappointing that National Grid's dragging their feet on getting the streetlights up. Because we can't take all poles down until the streetlights.
Until the lights are up. Ah.
See, if there's a pole that doesn't have an attachment to a streetlight, that can happen. But if, because you don't want to be downtown without streetlights, I don't think. So this has been an ugly for about a month with National Grid going back and forth. So we'll see where that ends up. But I, you know, if they can take down the ones that aren't attached to a streetlight, that'd be great. I wasn't downtown at all, so... It's good there. Is there anything else for anyone, anyone in the public that's on the line that needs anything? If not, can we have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make the motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, Nancy. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Joe. On favor?
You're welcome.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You as well.